Finance Committee meeting. Let the record reflect that Mr. Kendricks-Baskett is here, Council President, Vice Chair David Abdi, and I'm the Chair. Mark, will you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Constitution, to the Constitution, to the Constitution, to our Constitution.
Councillors, we have minutes from May the 9th. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second. And second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Councillors, if there's no objection, I'd like to take one document out of order. I'd like to take document number 19917, Office of Planning and Development, Brownfield Remediation Recovery Grant for Unit in Milford Street Home Ownership Project. Is there any objection? Here we now. Would Ms. Urina please come forward?
Good evening, Councillors. My name is Evelyn Urina. Used to live at 42 Kingston, now it's 155 all the way up in Lawrence.
So could you just give us a brief rundown as to what the request is?
Yes. This is for a project on Milford and Union Streets. It's a homeownership, and the developer is Lawrence Community Works. They're here with all the information that you guys may need.
Can you talk to me a little bit about the program? Or can someone just kind of give us an idea of what the request is specifically?
Yes, so the request that we're looking for is a vote from the City Council, the Mass Development request that the city commits to paying back 15% of the grant funds that will be awarded to Lawrence Community Works. And this money will come from the net proceeds from the tax revenue. The additional tax revenues that the project will benefit.
Okay, so I'm clear. So just help me get to where we need to be. This is to fund a certain revitalization project at a certain location. This is at Unit in Milford Street?
Correct.
So it's a Brownfields?
Brownfields grant from Mass Development.
From Mass Development?
Yes.
And the vote here is essentially for the -- is it for us to accept the money? Is it the vote to -- is that the vote this evening, so accept the $160,000? How much this is?
Generally not to accept it, but just to authorize the expenditure of the grant.
Correct.
The Department head can accept the grant. We just need the council to authorize spending those grant proceeds on the grant activity.
So basically, the grant is going to Lawrence Community Works for $160,000 to go into the project. And then the city has to commit to paying back 15% of that $160,000. That's why they need the council vote, so that saying that the city does commit to paying that 15% back from the net proceeds from the tax revenue that the project will -- we have Jessica Anders from Lawrence Community Works that can give you more information on the project.
Sure. And can I pass this around to you guys as well?
Please.
It might be helpful in looking at it. So just to give you a little context, because I know this is actually a little complicated, in all of the development that LCW and other developers, some other developers do in Lawrence, part of the way that we get the money for that development is that we often apply to Mass Development for Brownfields remediation grant funding. And in the past, that grant funding has just gone directly into the project. It helps us pay the hard costs and the site remediation costs, because everything that we have developed, there is usually lead paint in the soil, or asbestos in the soil, or sometimes worse things, or a buried oil tank, and we have to remediate that in order to develop it as housing. So Mastev has actually recently changed their regulations with regard to these funds in an attempt to kind of replenish the Brownfields fund over time. And the way they've done that is to say that, okay, we're going to give the developer a grant for this, but then what we want the city to commit to is that if the city realizes increased property tax revenues as a result of the development, that it commits to paying 15% of the increased amount back for a period of up to 30 years. And at the 30-year mark, either it's like whatever comes sooner, either the whole grant is repaid, or the 30-year mark hits. And so what we've done for you guys is just a little analysis that shows, here's what the current tax revenue that the city is getting on those lots as undeveloped lots is. That's what this first column is on that page. That's what LCW is currently paying to the city in annual tax revenue. After we develop these properties as single-family homes for homeownership and sell them to first-time homebuyers, then we're trying to conservatively project what the assessed value of the homes would be. And that second column shows what the projected taxes will be after the development and sale. So beforehand, you guys are getting a total of about $463 on these lots. After development, they'll be yielding about $10,700 and change. And the difference between those two is $10,274. What Mastev is now requiring is that 15% of that difference, the city gets to keep 85% of the difference, and then 15% of it goes back to the state to help replenish the Brownfields fund for future grants. And so what we outlined what that amount is, and then what remains for the city after the development and payback. So it's still, you know, a fairly substantial gain for the city. It's just 85% of the gain that you would have gotten if there wasn't this now, this repayment option. And the other thing that, just to make it all very clear, so I believe I might have put this original grant amount as 180, when it is in fact 160, but you're going to wind up paying back over 30 years. You'll wind up paying about 26% of the grant back. But you're also going to realize property, increased property taxes of about a quarter of a million dollars over that time period. So the other thing that I would just say about this is that every development that we do has Brownfields money in it, and it doesn't really happen without that money, because those are not costs that we can cover in any other way. We've done extensive testing on the site, and all of that testing's on record now. So whoever develops the property, they're going to have to remediate it in some way. And so, you know, we would need the city to vote to accept this obligation in order for us to receive the grant funds and move the project onward and create these homeownership units for people.
So I think I understand this a little bit better. Let me, can you, or can someone explain to me the City Council's role beyond this evening in the approval of the expenditures of this money for cleanup at the site? Is there any other, does the City Council have any other roles to play in this?
I don't think so. The City Council had a role to play when they voted to sell us the lots for the homeownership development in the first place. And they had, and we had applied through a competitive RFP process and submitted a plan for homeownership development. And at that point, the Planning and Development Department approved of our plan and recommended us to receive the lots. The council voted for us to be the approved buyer. We bought them, and now, and we've raised, I want to say it's over $2 million in other commitments from, there is some city CDBG money in there, but there's also quite a bit of DHCD money, there's some private foundation money, and we also just got another award of some private funds, all of which is going to enable us to build these houses. And it will probably cost us about twice as much to build them as we're going to sell them for. So that's where a lot of the subsidy money goes in. So I'm sorry, it's not $2 million, it's probably more, I don't know, $1.8 million that we've raised around this. I mean, it costs, I mean, it's actually probably going to cost us more than twice as much to build them as we are going to sell them for, so that they will be affordable to first-time homebuyers.
I've got some questions, but I'm going to hold off for a second. Are there any comments or questions, members of the committee?
I will have some, but I'm not prepared.
Okay. Mr.?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So.
Good evening, Jessica.
Hi.
So the 15%, the 15% will be of the difference in the projected taxes after the development occurs.
Exactly.
So it's not 15% of the $160,000 for the?
No, it's not 15% of the grant amount, of the original grant amount. It's 15% of the projected taxes that are realized each year for 30 years.
For the first 30 years.
For the first 30 years, exactly.
Okay. But it also says if, so one is full repayment of the Mass Development funds. So if we were to pay this before the 30 years, our commitment of the 15%?
Goes away. If you, if by paying that 15% each year, you reach up to the amount of the original grant, then you can, then you stop paying. Then the, once the original amount is fully paid back, you would stop paying.
Okay. And then in the information that was provided to us now, is there say 26% here?
So that's my calculation of, and I think if I, what I did was take 15% a year, I'm sorry, so I was trying to make a simple calculation. I wasn't factoring in like increases in assessed value or other things like that. But if you're, if 15% of the difference is roughly $1,500 a year, then over 30 years, you're paying back about $45,000, $46,000, which is, you know, it's less than 30, it's, I think the origin, the grant amount is 160, is that right? Right. So I have mistakenly put 180 there, but if the original grant amount is 160, then it's still, you're, we wind up paying back about 30% of the original grant.
Okay. Okay, so that makes sense. Yeah. Okay, so based on the calculation provided, the 26%, which if we actually do it, 160 is, it will be roughly 31% or so. So it will actually be, yeah, about 31%.
Something like that. Right, exactly. So that percentage should be 31% instead of?
Yeah, so the 26 is 31 plus or minus.
Yeah, about 31% of the original grant amount. That's right.
And which means that over the 30-year lifespan, we will have paid approximately 30, 31% of the original grant amount.
Yes.
That's what it says, okay.
Yes, exactly. That's right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification, because I was getting a bit confused.
Sure, yeah. No, it's, they have set up a complicated system, and so, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Anders.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I have another question, unless you want to go, Mr. Abdi.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Zandor.
Good evening.
Can you describe, we weren't provided with the application, nor do I need to see it, but what is the hazardous waste that is on the site?
It's typically on these sites lead and asbestos, because there were structures on the sites before. So in a lot of the single-family housing that we've developed in the North Common, the homeownership housing that we've developed in the North Common, when we've done soil testing, it's mostly been lead and asbestos. Renee, is there, are there other things on these sites that we know of?
Small amounts.
Okay, so there's, sometimes there's trace amounts of other things. In some sites that we've redeveloped, like the Summer Street Homes that we did, we did have some buried oil tanks, because one of the properties had been, I believe, a hardware store before. But it's not, there's, as far as I know, and I can absolutely confirm this with you, but there weren't any buried oil tanks that we have found through the testing on these properties. So there's, it's usually, it's mostly lead and asbestos, and sometimes some trace amounts of other chemicals. We, what we will typically do to remediate is that we dig down a certain amount, and we take off like the top two or three feet of soil, whatever we're required to do by DEP regulations, and then we replace all of that with clean fill on the site. And then there's, you know, landscaping and other things, so that there's no hazardous material that could be, like even if people want to garden there, or whatever they want to do, that there's no, you know, environmental threat to their well-being.
And does this, does the $160,509, does it go entirely to the construction of the homes?
It goes entirely to the remediation costs. So Mastev will only pay for the remediation costs. So it pays for the excavation, the removal of the soil, the disposal of the soil at a facility, often, it's usually in New Hampshire that these things get trucked up to, and then the replacement with clean fill. So it's all, and some site work that's, you know, related to all of that. It goes entirely into preparing the sites for, for the, you know, setting the foundations and constructing the houses.
So all direct costs?
Yes, it's all direct costs.
To excavation, removal, and site work?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
No further questions. When was the vote of conveyance from the city to LCW?
I believe it was in 2014. Yep. So what happened at that point, we bought the lots from the city, we immediately put in applications to line up these properties for development. We were successful in applying to the state for funding. The city made a commitment of city home funds. We have a commitment from a private foundation called the Charles Bank Homes. And then we started an application process to Mastev, and they, very shortly after that, basically froze the Brownfields fund. It ran out of money, and then there was like a reauthorization process. And even after the reauthorization process, the governor and Secretary Ash froze the fund while they, because they wanted to implement these new regulations. And that took almost, so there was first sort of a year delay, because there was no capitalization of the fund. And then there was another year's delay, because there was this freezing and this administrative process that they worked out. And they just unfroze the fund this past, this January. And so we've been then working with them to finalize the award since then.
So I'm going to make a comment here, and I am warning my colleagues tonight, that they will be hearing more of this as the year progresses. This is the first time I'm doing it tonight, and this will not stop me from voting for it, because I think there may have been a commitment made in 2014 to go forward with this. But the comment is the following: continuing to build more structures in our city is becoming unsustainable. For adding more and more units is becoming unsustainable. In 2000, and I'm looking primarily at the school department, and how many seats we have to require in our classrooms. In 2012, we had 12,989 seats. In 2017, it's 13,903. It's about 1,000 more seats that we have to find for our students. And when we're building more, and more, and more, it's really starting to put a real tremendous, not tension is the right word, but burden, if you will, on the school department to continue to be able to do it. This evening, we're going to be voting on, later on this evening, to send to the full council more money to send to the schools to provide our children the ability to have a decent education in our school system. Meanwhile, we are taxing them. The money that we're bringing on taxes right now is not anywhere coming close to what we need to be able to provide the residents of the city, the current residents and the children of our city, to be able to get the education that they need. And we're going down a very, very, very poor trajectory as well. Let me throw some stats at you real quick. This is the number of units we're going to be bringing into this city in the next, within the next couple of years. There's the Van Brody Mill, by the end of 2019, 101 units. Five Franklin Street, Phase 1, is in June 18th, Phase 2 in 2019, 276 units. Monarch Lofts, Phase 2, 64 units, that's by the end of 2000, end of this year. Pacific Mill, Phase 3, end of 2018, 145 units. Newark Paper, by the end of 2018, 250 units. June 2017, that's coming up in a couple of months, Pacific Mills, Phase 1 and 2, 169. And of course, we've already have the Unit crossing Phase 2, that's already taken place. And that, those are 73 units at an LCW place. We are building, building, building. We're not taking into consideration where the families are going when we're building these things. We're not taking that into consideration. We're not taking into consideration the traffic issues that are going out. We're not taking into consideration of the other utilities that we need, whether it's police, fire, et cetera. And at wintertime, where I get phone calls, because people's streets can't get applied, because they can't get through, parking and other issues. It's unsustainable. And I just want, the message has got to get out there, that as we're building, building, and building, we're creating more and more, the law of unintended consequences is very expensive. And it's not fair to those children at this point, and their parents, we're sending their kids to school, and not fair to the other taxpayers, so we've got to pay for this to make this go forward. I say that all as by way of background. I voted for this in 2014. The information that I just gave to you within the last minute here is information I received recently. Had I known that back in 2014, I think my vote would have been changed. But I know that you, I know this organization worked in good faith in 2014 to bring it forward. I don't think that it's right at this point, it's not easy for me to say that, but I think the city did make a commitment at some level to go forward with this. But I think it's important, as we go forward, for any organization or developer to understand that we're going forward with things, it does have a cost. And if we're not looking at the other side, we're being blind to something. So anyway, is there a motion or any other comments by the council, the committee members?
I have a motion to recommend this to the full council with favorable recommendation.
Motion made.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Here we now, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it. And we would be glad to have the discussion about housing, building housing, and what some of the needs and balances are there, because I think it's a complex discussion, and you raise very valid points. And I would maybe have some arguments back on the other side around it, but I'd love to have the conversation.
Very good.
Yeah.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you all for your support.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next document. Go back to the top. FY18, Annual Authorization of Revolving Funds. Mark Giannello, Finance Director, Mr. Giannello.
Good evening, Councillors. You have before you the renewal of, or annual renewal of four revolving funds, the Bellevue Cemetery Revolving Fund, Council on Aging Revolving Fund, Recreation and Parks Self-Supporting Revolving Fund, and the Veterans Memorial Stadium Revolving Fund. So what this, what we're asking the council is, is there support to renew these revolving funds for another fiscal year?
Any questions by members of the committee?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Abdi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, Ms. Giannello, talk to me about the Veteran Memorial Stadium Revolving Fund. Is that one that is, so actually, why don't you back it up and tell me, give me and the people in the room and at home, who manages the stadium, and how does this revolving fund play into that?
The revolving fund last year took in approximately $17,000, and they expended approximately $19,000. They had a beginning balance of $15,000, or almost $16,000 from the previous year. So they're, right now, as of April 27th, they have a balance of $14,000 in the revolving fund. It's managed by the Economic Development and Planning Office. Someone books events and so forth there. And this fund is where they, the proceeds go into this fund, and then it's used to provide some of the upkeep at the stadium.
Thank you for that answer. The, so please help a, still a first-term councillor here. Who operates that stadium? Who is the day-to-day operator of that stadium?
I'm not sure about operations, but I know who books the events. I know it's a, it's a, departments involved. DPW has some involvement in the veteran stadium. They have a DPW laborer who opens the gates and empties the trash, and has some involvement in the maintenance and upkeep of it. And then, as I indicated before, the Office of Planning and Development through Economic Development Director generally, they have their staff that actually takes the phone calls if you want to book the, book the stadium for an event. And they have a calendar, and they book it. So they're kind of managing it, and then DPW's kind of taking care of the maintenance, is my understanding.
And does the city, does the city realize 100% of all revenues gained by that stadium 365 days a year?
Whatever they, rentals they receive goes into this revolving fund.
Without exception.
Yes, right, to my knowledge.
When the school department utilizes that stadium, what do they pay? Or is there a fee schedule for the school department when they utilize the stadium?
I don't have the fee schedule. I know they book events through the school department. The school department might, they're here, they might be able to say what they pay for it. But, you know, I know the stadium is managed and booked through that office, but I don't know what their fee structure is.
But the Lawrence Public Schools do pay for the use of that stadium?
I assume they do. No? I can, I can reserve?
We pay a portion of utilities.
Sure.
Well, she can't yell from the back, so if you're going to speak.
We pay a portion of utilities.
Could you please identify yourself, please?
Sure. Mary Lou Bergeron, Assistant Superintendent, Lawrence Public Schools. We pay a portion of the utilities for any of the events when we have, like evening games, et cetera. We don't pay to use the field, because it's our home field. It's kind of like any of your ball fields, you get to use them for your home fields. If we use it for a big event, so if we were going to sponsor a festival, yes, we would pay a rental fee. But for regular school games, we don't pay a fee.
Through you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Bergeron, and I appreciate, it's good to see leadership here answering questions, and I do appreciate that. I ask, because I've been asking for several months regarding rentals, when the public schools charge city agencies to utilize school properties, for instance, the police when they have the open gyms, and the city baseball leagues and whatnot.
No, city does not pay to lease that facility. The only thing they pay is for the staff that have to be on site. Similar to, we need police for an event, we pay for the police. If you need a custodian in a building because you're having an event and they need to lock up, they pay for the custodial fee.
Sure. I'm trying to, so you know, through you, Mr. Chairman, trying to learn all of the finances as I get approached by the various nonprofit leagues throughout the city that their constituency is, the same children that we all serve. One of the largest complaints I get is that the school system is prohibitive to use the high school indoor fieldhouse and facilities. And it is something that I've just been trying to, as we go forward, learn more about the practices of the public school systems, and that is the reason for my question.
We can send you, we have a whole policy on leasing of facilities.
I appreciate your answer. Thank you. Are there any more questions, or is there any motions?
Motion to send up to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Motion's made.
Second.
And seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
As no, the ayes have it. Document 19717, appropriation, educational support from free cash reserve for the sum And the insurance recovery, claim recovery of of 1,024,361.37, and the insurance recovery, claim recovery of 1,475,638.63 to the school department appropriation. That total, if you're doing the math, council says 2,000, 2.5 million dollars. It was offered by Mayor Dan Rivera. Uh, Ms., uh, is there anybody here to speak on this matter?
I think the school department will answer what they're gonna do with it. I just was going to just reiterate that the, uh, insurance claim, uh, this was the insurance claim proceeds from a settlement from the Lawrence High School, long, uh, Lawrence High School case, and the 1,475 and change, that's why it's an odd number, is the, uh, exact amount of those proceeds. Uh, so, uh, the mayor has, uh, recommended that they be transferred to the school. In addition, the school, uh, the receiver has asked for some additional funding for this, uh, next school year, uh, so the, uh, he's asked for two and a half million. So the mayor has, uh, requested before you is to take a, a million and change out of the free cash reserves, add that to the insurance claim recovery which we just received late April, or early May, and, uh, and this transfers for two and a half million to the school department to help them with their budget issues. And someone from the school department can answer specifically where that use will go.
So, thank you. So I, let's just talk from a very, very broad perspective. Um, we know what the numbers are. What do the numbers represent as far as what that means to the children and their parents in this, in our city?
Good afternoon, councilmen. Um, so this year, we're faced with, uh, large deficit to the school district, and that's why we're here today before you requesting this. If, if the school district would not receive this money, it would mean, it'd be a detriment to our students, it would be layoffs for many teachers and paraprofessionals. So we're here to request these funds today in order to keep the service level that we're giving the children today. Um, as we've had in presentations in front of you, the high school dropout rates have decreased, our test scores have increased, so we've done significant progress in our school system, and we don't wanna see that stop. Quite the contrary, we wanna see it continue, so going into the year with a large deficit would really hurt the progress of the kids, and you would see, uh, that be detrimental to their learning. Um, in addition to that, this year, we received less money from the state because charter schools received more funds, so that also was a negative impact to our, our revenue for the upcoming year. In addition to that, we also lost 821,000 in grants. So, a combination of those factors, we're left with a 4.3 million dollar deficit, hence we're requesting from the city the two and a half million.
So you repeat that last part again. I got the 200, 321 in grants that was lost this year?
821,000. It's on page 12 on your presentation.
Thank you. All right, I see it, thank you. And this, and this is supposed to get to 2.5 million, is this, should the math be adding up to that point in here, or not?
That's, that's not in here specifically. But, um, I believe, do they have this last page, the summary of expenditures? Basically, um, the summary of expenditures, if you look at last year's budget versus this year's budget, our, our expenses have increased about 5.1 million.
Do you have a slide for that?
Sorry?
Do you have a slide for that?
I can make a copy and send it to you, I have one page.
That's all right, I'm trying to follow along.
I have a page in front of me that you can borrow. But basically, um, GIC increased this year, city retirement costs increased this year, out-of-district tuition rates for our special education increased this year. In addition to just the general contractual obligations for all of our union employees, is, and we're in the middle of negotiations as well for several other unions. So with a combination of all that, it's about 5.1 million. And if you look at that last presentation I had referred to on page 12, it's only really showing that we got an increase of 743,000. And that's how we came up with the 4.3 million deficit.
Okay, so help me, this is, it sounds easy, but it's some complexity. So we're at 4.3 million dollar deficit, we're gonna find 2.5 million through two different funding sources to reduce it, which leaves us with 1.8 million dollars.
Correct.
How are we gonna, how are we bridging that gap?
We're working with the superintendent and the finances and executive teams within the school district to see where we can cut with, um, that would be the least amount of impact to the students.
So you're gonna cut 1.8 million dollars, is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
That sounds like a lot, that sounds like a little big number. That's a hot potato question, by the way.
It is, it is a big number because we cut 5 million going into this fiscal year. So, over two years, it's a 6.8 million dollar cut we're making. But we understand, that's part of our obligation to stay within our budget. The issues that we're finding are there are some, several new unfunded mandates that we're being hit with, like the, um, foster care transportation, which is new this year. So you'll notice your transportation budget went up because we are now obligated to provide transportation to students who are in foster care if their foster team feels that it's in their best interest that they remain in the school that they're currently with, in, in the district, rather than moving to the new school where their house, or where their group home or foster home may be. So it's similar to the homeless transportation, but we own them until they either age out of the foster system, or the foster team believes that we should relocate them to a school in a different neighborhood or different district based on their needs. So that's an unfunded piece. We're moving to new state testing, the MCAS 2.0, which is gonna be all online, which means there's a need for function, foundational money to increase and make sure we have the capability to do all testing all, all line from grades three through 10. Uh, so we've been building capacity, but there's still some infrastructure pieces we need to do there. And we're working on the restructuring at the high school, which has grown to the point where we can no longer house everybody at the high school, so we're removing ourselves out of our current space, relocating, and having to furnish that space now for students. So there's some one-time big costs that we need, that we can't cut a lot more.
I, I don't, I can go down a rabbit hole real simple, and I'm gonna, Mr. Rabidu will caution me against going down that road, and I will not go down there, and then Mr. Vasquez will caution me, and I will not go down the rabbit hole. But I will go just, I'll, I'll peek into the rabbit hole, but I won't go down it. So, uh, how, what is the per cap, what is the per student expenditure? There's a number of fix for each student, right? That, that you, there's some sort of math. What is that number currently?
12, 12, 13. 12, 357.
12,357.
Correct.
And that factors in some of the things you just mentioned. So not only for that amount of money, a child in the city of Lawrence will get educated, uh, bus if need be, potentially, you talked about that, sports, um, maybe even a meal or two?
Oh, two meals, they give, yeah, free breakfast, free, free lunch.
Part of that 12, 357.
Right. And I know the state's looking to fix and remedy the formula for that, because what happened when the state converted to their new economically disadvantaged formula, instead of doing the free and reduced lunch because so many districts have gone to universal. Um, many of the districts who had high and low income numbers saw a great reduction, which is one of the weighted formulas that's used to provide foundation money. So our free and reduced rate used to be somewhere in the high 80s, we're now at about 63% under the economically disadvantaged. So they're realizing that formula didn't help in terms of the weight that comes for foundation budget. So they're looking at those types of things, which have, have led to some gaps in terms of what we're getting in funding for what we need.
And I'll make this point, and then I'll stop. The, the point that I'll make is, everything is, there, there's overlap and things are dependent upon each other. The discussion we had just prior to this dealt with, with building more homes and more units, and I went through an exhaustive list of what we anticipate seeing, not only in this past year, but in the next two years, and there is a big number. And you can multiply that number with how many families are gonna potentially go in there, and then multiply that by 12,357, and that number probably is only going up, it's probably not going down.
Likely.
Pardon me?
Likely.
Right. So, it's, 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 I'll, I think you've, you've helped make the argument of the unsustainability, unless we're gonna keep opening up our wallets, um, and be, uh, whether it's taxpayers paying more taxes, or we're gonna try to find more grants or more funding from the state, and we're already at, I think, at the tipping, we're already as, we're at an extreme, aren't we, as a city, within the amount of monies we receive from the, uh, from the, uh, from the state with respect to it? So I, that's a conversation we'll have at a later time.
You agree, 'cause we do receive the highest rate of chapter 70 dollars in the state.
Cannot receive any more, potentially any more money. We are at the absolute extreme of this.
Yes.
Okay. Right. Um, I'm done with the questions on this, and I promise I did not go down the rabbit hole too much. Any other questions or comments? Motions?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vasquez.
The 2.5 pers, uh, uh, a million, uh, is that gonna be added to the new budget submitted to the city council?
No.
No.
I don't know how Maccas handling that.
So does it say one-time spend?
I think they're doing it as two separate allocations.
Okay.
Where, uh, they've, they need money for F, this, this money will be used, uh, to facilitate their FY18 budget, but since we have the funds now, and we have to appropriate it before free cash expires in June 30th, uh, we have this transfer before you tonight of 2.5 million. And the school department can, through some, uh, uh, they can spend this money, uh, in, in this year, and it, and to reduce their costs for next year, and particularly in their special education tuition area, they're allowed to prepay those tuitions, so it will help them with their next year's budget, even though we're a couple weeks early.
Okay. I know that we have not actually gotten the opportunity to review the school, uh, the school department's budget. Uh, we even haven't approved the, the operating budget for fiscal year 2018, but are we looking at fiscal year 2019 already? Uh, is there gonna be?
We were already talking 19 because we know we, we cannot be back in this situation again, so we're already looking at reductions and where we can hold the line. We already gotten good word that our utility costs are going, going to go down through the collaborative bidding process that recently went through, so we should be seeing some good reductions in gas and electricity. So we see things like that we're working towards.
Yeah, 'cause I, I see that, you know, luckily, we are receiving this insurance claim for 1.4, and we also have some free cash available. Uh, and we're able to do it for this fiscal year.
Correct.
But my concern will be after.
We understand this would be a one-time situation.
Okay. 'Cause I, I wouldn't wanna, I, I don't think it will be, um, respond, fiscally responsible for the city to be in this similar situation in 2019. It will be very risky financially speaking for us.
Agreed, and, and just to let you know, a lot of the districts across the Commonwealth are working, um, with the state on the foundation budget to change it, and it's been, um, I think it's into its second year.
Okay.
So we're hoping to see something come down the pipeline this year, um, and we're, we're getting really active in that too, so. That's also part of the problem, is the formula that, that they have out there today, and there is a task force across the Commonwealth with all the districts working on that, with all the superintendents. So just, that's just an added help to us that is separate from the city funding.
I am happy to hear that, and, and thank you for the work that you guys are doing. But I just wanted to point out that this, you know, the, the 2.5 is coming from an insurance claim, uh, which is more than 50% of, of the money that we will be appropriating, uh, and that, that won't happen year after year, so.
We understand that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just be, just to be accurate, I think part of that is coming from the insurance claim, the other part of that's coming from free cash.
From free cash, yes.
Okay. Um, questions, comments, motions? Mr. Chairman, through you. Mr. Rabidu.
Thanks again, um, Ms. Bergeron, Ms. Hedor. I appreciate you being here this evening to answer questions, um, regarding what essentially is a request from the city for 1 million dollars in what is essentially capital monies to subsidize the public school system's operating budget. And that is something, um, I'm sure we all take seriously, I, I know you do, we've worked together for years. But it does give me a moment for pause. Um, you know, I've lived here all my life, I know the challenges the schools are up against, I know the successes you all are making. It's, um, the teachers, I can't give enough credit to what they do in the classroom. But what struck me, if, I'm just looking at your budget, I, I see Mr. Riley submitted this a month ago, I'm seeing it for the first time this evening, just based on the cover letter, it says April 18th. Um, so just, to be fair, I, I'm just reading this this evening for the first time. One of the areas, as we look at FY18, um, that caught my attention was that the cuts next year would come from educational expenses more so than, well, it's 296,000 dollars. And, um, you know, utilities and maintenance shows an increase of 760,000 dollars. I'm rounding. Um, can you just talk to me a little bit about, um, the decisions made as to cuts regarding direct educational expenses as opposed to, you know, I realize salaries and stipends, that's kinda baked, and benefits is, you know, that, that's baked, I, I realize there's only so many places you can go. Um, but for instance, the utilities, that seems like a bit of a high spike or, uh, assumptions being made on next year's futures? Can you just talk to me a little bit about the decision-making, putting this budget together?
So, a lot of those numbers are comparison to what was submitted in the budget last year. So, um, it might, and we haven't cut, again, the budget in front of you, we haven't cut the 1.8 million. So this was, this was the budget presented as is. Now we're going back to cut the 1.8 million, so what you're looking at is, just so you understand, we haven't cut the 1.8 million, what's, what is in front of you. Secondly, um, ed supplies, now that there's a lot of resources online for the students, and the schools have autonomy, the licenses, licenses for the students to go online and use these resources are much less expensive than actual textbooks for these students. So you'll see a huge reduction in that, for that purpose. Um, again, we have over 13,000 dol, 13,000 students across the district, and when you multiply that with textbooks versus a license, a license could be something as small as, I'd say, 30.
20 dollars.
20 dollars versus a textbook that could be.
150.
150. So you will see stuff like that, just because of be, it being 2017, and that's, that's kinda what the, um, the, the principals have decided, and for example, math resources, IXL, and there's a few others, that, um, I know it's really popular in many districts that the kids have extra homework on that, so they're not carrying their textbooks home because they have all these IXL, and the teachers are performing on smart boards, so, but that's a, that's a big reason why you would see something like that.
And another reason is, schools have autonomy over their budgets, so they get to choose where their resources are to be allocated. So when they met with their teacher teams and they made discussion, they may have used educational resources to contract for, uh, an enrichment provider or something like that last year, but this year, they said, no, we're not gonna contract, we're bringing aboard the person, or we're going to run a different type of program that would not be coming out of that funding. So they shift their money accordingly based on what their needs are for their buildings.
So, but what I'm hearing is increased cost of doing business, but yet you're showing educational expenses decreasing by 296,000.
What page you on?
I'm on page 12.
Excuse me. You're in the budget, which is different than the presentation.
Page 13.
Because you're looking at the budget, not the presentation.
I am looking at the budget.
They don't know that.
I'm sorry, I was looking at the budget.
Oh, okay.
Again, we just got the materials this evening, so I'm, I'm going through it as quickly as I can to, 'cause I have to take a vote this evening.
We're not voting on the budget, of course.
No, thanks, I, no, I appreciate it.
We're gonna be here next week for the budget.
Right, so, uh, Mr. Little Plant just, um, uh, we're not voting on the budget this evening for anyone that, if I caused any confusion. All we're doing is making recommendations, the subcommittee, to the full council as to whether or not to... to the full council as to whether or not to transfer over one-million dollars in free cash or capital to the school department to cover as part of the two-point-five-million-dollar appropriation. So... The foster care transportation that you cited in your comments.
Yes.
But, that will be entirely borne by the city next week when you propose the budget in the transportation.
Transportation is borne by the city, but that's why one of the costs that went up and why our request has gone up.
But, that doesn't add to the deficit that we're trying to address this evening, at least in part, just at least in part, by the two-point-
In part, not, not this particular amount, no.
I would just say in closing, in closing my comments, that using, and I know you here, I know you understand this, but I am very hesitant to vote in support of capital monies, which I'm referring to as capital monies, but it's, you know, the city, cities, municipalities refer to as free cash. Wall Street doesn't like to see municipalities spending capital dollars of free cash on operating expenses. You know, I suppose a one-time is explainable. But, then I would ask Mr. Riley, if he were here, when he builds his FY nineteen budget, if this is a one-time only, you then have a structural deficit of at least two-point-five-million dollars. We help you this year. Who's to say Mr. Rionello has money in the bank next year if you were to come back a second time? But, certainly, as we all know, who's lived here in the city of Lawrence for any period of time, free cash is never given in this city. This is a very good time in the city as far as free cash goes. There's been good stewardship of the money the last few years, and there's people at the podium that, and there's people in the audience that are responsible for that. I just caution that this really does have to be a very infrequent request, and it's something that, you know, we need to, as a city, be able to get a good return, good rate for the bonds. And, it's very, I'm not, I don't know Mr. Rionello's business like he does, not even probably five percent. But, I do know enough that this makes me nervous, that if there's too many of these beyond the school, if there's other, that we get in a position where our bond rating is affected, or the rainy day comes, where not too, not too long ago, we had some structural issues ourselves. So, I'll conclude my thoughts there. I think I've conveyed my concerns. And, you know, I read Mr. Riley's comments in the newspaper recently, and I hope you bring that back to him.
And he does understand that this is an extreme situation that we're asking for, and that we're grateful that we've had net school spending for the last couple of years, but there were many years that we kind of were below. So, we're hoping a one-time will kind of keep us on track.
I appreciate it. I appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
For key-
Mr. Chairman.
And thank you, committee members. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to the, sent up to the full council with a favorable recommendation?
Motion made.
Second.
And second, I've got one more question. So, I get a phone call or a text message in the next ten minutes from a constituent saying, two-point-five million. What do we get in for that again? Give me the bumper sticker response.
Two-point-five million will allow us to maintain all current service levels for all students in the district.
Thank you.
For the next-
The next fiscal year.
The next fiscal year.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you, councilors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, document one-eight-six-seventeen, Recreation Department, the requests and authorization for expenditure of a gift from Dean and Flynn Incorporated, eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-two dollars. This is presented to us by Nelson Ortiz, Recreation Program Director on behalf of Mayor Dan Rivera. Mr. Ortiz, how are you?
Pretty good. Nelson Ortiz, thirty Bus Ball Street, Lawrence, Mass. I'm here to ask for your acceptance on this eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-two dollars. This money's going to be used for our kids during our summer program. It's going to be used for busing.
So, who, who are the benefactors? Who was Dean?
Fiesta show.
That's Fiesta shows.
I'm sorry?
Fiesta shows.
They're the Fiesta shows folks that contributed, eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-two dollars. Questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rabdi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I want to start by saying that we all know Mr. Ortiz, and I want to open my comments by giving him credit because this is, this is a gentleman that year in and year out, whether I'm on this council or I'm at a ballpark somewhere, I appreciate the service that you do for our children.
Thank you.
And for all intents and purposes, are a one-man show. And, so, I do have you in mind when others come to us throughout the city. And everybody's budget priorities are important to them, and they talk about, I'm this, this is that. And I think about twenty-seven or more ballparks. And the fact that, you know, Mr. LaPlante earlier spoke about our population is increasing, our housing stock is increasing. There's more kids. We know there's more of a challenge for us in public service to keep these kids entertained and busy in a very formative, beneficial, and positive way. And, you know, I saw the Fiesta shows, and what struck me was, wow, we still do these carnivals. Because, you know, everybody looks at carnivals as kind of sketchy. Who goes to these? And, you know, I don't know if I read it or if I just realized it, but that the beneficiary is the rec department.
Correct.
What we used to call the summer buses to the beach.
The beneficiary are our kids.
So, I have no questions of eighty-one forty-two being donated or transferred to the Recreation Department. I wish it was ten times that. And I guess I just use this as an opportunity to say thank you for what you do on behalf of the people of Lawrence and in the administration of Mayor Rivera, and the mayors have preceded him, because you've been the one constant. You and I both know it's not easy. I've been, I've been on, with you when leagues have challenges and individuals have challenges, and you answer the call twenty-four-seven. And you do it with things like an eighty-one-hundred-dollar transfer to your account. So, thank you. Keep it up. And don't retire. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. You're welcome. Is there a motion to accept the donation from Dean and Flynn Incorporated for the sum of eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-two dollars?
So, move?
Motion has been made, and it has been seconded. If there is no further discussion, I, by the way, echo the vice chair's comments. And you do, too, Mr. President.
I do, too.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those know.
Thank you.
The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Ortiz, don't be a stranger. Next Tuesday, is it next Tuesday? No, the week after.
I'm here next Thursday.
And we'll see you next Thursday. We will see you next Thursday.
Yeah.
Okay. On this matter, it'll be a week, a week from Tuesday.
And can I make the motion now that we take him out of order and take him first because he is one guy?
Yeah.
His line and the budget will be about that big?
Yeah, I was the last one on the list.
I felt bad.
Are you last one on the list?
Huh?
Are you last one on the list?
I was the last one on this one and the last one on the other.
So, timeout. Timeout. Just timeout. It was merely a cut-in pace exercise. It does not necessarily mean that it's going to be last. So, we will use extraordinary discretion at even.
He's going to call all those baseball leagues and have them pack them home.
Take him first. Thank you, guys.
Take care, Nelson.
All right. It's none of the business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those know, the ayes have it.